Good afternoon. We're going to have the Georgetown Virtual Town Hall Social Services Panel. My name is Suzy Pukish. I'm with the Georgetown Health Foundation. Our mission is to generate and accelerate positive change in our community's health, and we do this by investing in and partnering with key nonprofit organizations, including our panelists today and the lovely and wonderful GCCMA. So, let's get started. I'm honored to have this time with our panelists and viewers. The goal of this social services panel is to share information and local resources that may be helpful to our community. So, panelists, if you wouldn't mind, please introduce yourselves by sharing your name, your title, and the organization you represent. And Kelly, can we go to you next?
My name is Kelly St. Julien. I am the Branch Director for the Boys and Girls Club of Georgetown. I've been with the Boys and Girls Club movement for nearly 30 years. Started going there as a club kid and have worked all over the country in clubs. And it is, it's definitely my passion to give back to communities by helping the children. We're honored to be here today representing the club and looking forward to a spirited panel and learning a lot about what's going on with our other nonprofit partners.
Thank you so much, Kelly. Jenna, can we turn it to you, please?
Sure. Good afternoon. I just want to say how thrilled I am to be here today to, with the GCCMA's Juneteenth Town Hall meeting. I'm Jenna O'Connor. I'm the Executive Director of The Caring Place, and I have been here, gosh, almost seven years already. I have, pretty much my whole career has been spent working for a variety of nonprofit organizations, kind of starting with community organizing and community building organizations. And from that period, I learned that those organizations that are community-founded and community-supported are the ideal. So, The Caring Place is the first organization I've ever worked for where that is the case. And so, I'm really thrilled and privileged to be a part of The Caring Place and this community. Thank you.
Is Dr. C. on the line by chance?
Yes.
We have our doctor from Lone Star?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Hi.
Doctor, hi there. Would you, would you mind introducing yourself and tell us a little bit about you, please?
Sure. Most definitely. My name is Dr. Chinway Afaribe. I am a pediatrician and adolescent medicine specialist at Lone Star Circle of Care. I've been there for over two years, and my passion is bridging the worlds between the medical aspects of healthcare and the social aspects of healthcare. So, I think this forum is a wonderful place for us to have that discussion, and I look forward to having it.
Thank you so much. And Rhonda?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, my name is Rhonda Franklin Romar. And I was saying earlier that sometimes when people ask, you know, who we are, we determine that by our title. That is not something that I do because I am Rhonda Franklin Romar first. And yes, I do work for the Salvation Army. I've worked there since July of 2014. And I'm happy to be working there because Salvation Army, we do the most good and for individuals who are possibly experiencing homelessness, and we want to stop that before it begins. I consider myself a people enthusiast because I love people. I'm also a mental health advocate for individuals who are experiencing emotional distress. I have lived experience. And so, it's just amazing to be here today with everyone and to, you know, have the opportunity to tell you just a little bit about the Salvation Army that maybe you did or did not know. And thank you so much for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you, Rhonda. So, let's just open with a rich question to begin that any panelist can answer, and we're looking for about, try to, you know, to hold it to about three minutes for each. Here are the questions. During this pandemic, what has your organization done to address the various needs from individuals? And what have been, has been the greatest challenge to help the individuals and families that you work with? Anyone want to raise their hand?
I'll start.
Jenna, then Rhonda.
So, we decided to close on March 14th, and we decided very quickly to mobilize to focus on food because we had to, most of our volunteers, we have about 400 volunteers, most fall into the high-risk category. And so, we have 30 staff. So, we mobilized our staff to provide food. So, we started doing that in a contactless way through our drive-through, starting on March 17th. And so, we have been providing food from that time typically three times a week. So, from 10:00 to noon on Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, we've been providing anywhere from 35 pounds of food to 50 pounds of food, depending on what we have per family. We're typically seeing about 120 to 150 families each time. And so, on June 1st, we also started with financial assistance again. So, we are assisting with rent and utilities as well as emergency dental and prescriptions. So, I think the biggest, there have been many, many challenges, but I think one of the biggest challenges is, of course, shifting things to as contactless as possible so that both our staff is safe and the people that are coming are safe so that we can protect the mission of the organization so that we can continue to provide basic human services for everyone in this community. And so, that has been, I think, the biggest challenge because we've just, it's not our culture. Our culture is relationship-based. It's face-to-face. It's, you know, and this social distancing, mask-wearing is very, very hard for us and also operating without our volunteers and just our staff. We've, we've had to relearn everything, and, and we're still learning. We're still learning. We're still adapting. But it's been, it's been an interesting time and a learning time, and we're just so happy that we've been able to continue to provide services through the support of this community. So, we're, we're just very grateful for that.
So much. Rhonda?
So, during the global pandemic, the Williamson County Salvation Army, we remained open. We worked remotely from home and from time to time, you know, came into the office. And we continued to see clients providing electronic applications. We continued to accept referrals from our partnering agencies that remained open. And as I was saying, normally, we would see clients by referral only and would not walk-in. But at this time, you know, during the pandemic, I guess, starting in March, we started just to accept client calls. Typically, we would see about 17 to 23 clients a month before the pandemic, but during the pandemic, we are seeing about triple that amount. It's just very interesting considering that we're such a small office. So, we were helping with rental and utility assistance, preparing emergency food bags. And although we are small staff, we knew we had to rise to the occasion, and I say we're mighty warriors for our Williamson County families in need. And so, that is just a few of the things that we've done, you know, during this pandemic just to try to make it through. And as Gina was saying, I mean, man, this has been very difficult, you know, trying to do applications through email and who, you know, you have to think about the ones who don't have access to a computer, the ones who don't have access to, you know, really knowing how technology works and trying to help individuals do that so that you can help them during this time. So, thank you for the question.
Rhonda, thank you so much. You know, the, one of the things that I've seen over and over with the organizations that we support, which, you know, your organizations are those, are the incredibly tenacious and being adaptable and resilient to all of these things that happen to serve the people that you serve. And I just want to let you know how much I have appreciated watching you make those changes so, so quickly and how I appreciate you just saying that it's, it's not, it hasn't been easy. You know, it's, that's important to say. So, Kelly, are you, are you ready? Okay.
So, for, for the Boys and Girls Club, we'll typically see, in the month of March, we'll see 150 to 175 kids a day, and that's reached to a halt. We ended up closing down for about two weeks, and then when we reopened, we did it in a way that could be safe for as many kids as we could possibly take. That number is 32 kids. We have, we group kids into groups of eight with one staff member, and they are air-gapped by a room between the other groups, and they rotate around the building. We sanitize the rooms in between and try to give kids a variety of activities to do. The big challenge for these kids is staying six feet apart. A lot of them, I mean, that really isn't conducive to how they behave normally. And, and a big challenge for us is finding activities for these kids to do that involve that social distancing and that, and that safety. We've had to rethink a lot of how kids interact together and a lot of the ways that we interact with kids and a lot of the activities we present them. So, while it's been a challenge, it's, it's, it's been fun to, to explore those opportunities, especially the virtual ones. Only being able to have 32 kids, but having, you know, a user base of more than 800 a year. We've reached out virtually and started doing daily Zoom sessions where we're doing art projects together and having trivia contests and other things. And that's allowed us to have some pretty productive group sessions with teens and, and some, and to see at least through a computer screen, some amazing art produced by six, seven, and eight-year-olds. And we've, we've enjoyed the process of trying to adapt to that new normal. But yeah, it pains us to only be open to 32 families and only being able to provide that service to them. Initially, we started to take in mission-essential families, so medical profession and first responders. And we've since opened that up, but to be honest, my, my waiting list is pretty long, and I'm, I'm really limited to as many staff as I can have in the building to operate safely. So, while we're doing what we can, we feel like it's, it's a very small footprint compared to what we try to do in, in a normal year. And so, but we are happy to be available to the people we can be.
Thank you, Kelly. Dr. Afaribe, would you like to weigh in on this question as well?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think, as everyone has mentioned, the pandemic has really tested everyone's ability to cope with change in a rapid fashion. And so, at Lone Star, it is a system of like community health centers. We provide primary and behavioral healthcare for 94,000 patients a year. So, we're also located in about five counties, including in Houston. And we really needed to be able to address communications and clinical responses. With regards to communications, details of the virus changed so rapidly at the height of the pandemic. And so, I think it was important for our organization to be able to ensure that our providers had up-to-date information to share with the patients. And then externally, we were able to talk and communicate with the community about how our services were adapting, how we were trying to make sure that our services were not interrupted. So, in the clinical response, it was important for us to have providers with protective personal equipment, keeping them safe, putting processes in place in the clinic so that we can screen patients, test them, and manage those who are high-risk. We also introduced new ways of conducting health services by providing telemedicine and telehealth via video and phone. So, a lot of this for a large organization like ours, you know, really took a while to kind of get off the ground. It's like trying to move a freight ship, you know, quite, quite slowly, but enough to make sure that our patients were in good hands. Some of the challenges that we're still facing really is about keeping up with the pace of how information is changing, also trying to make sure that our providers, who also are individuals, who also have families, are, you know, we're accommodating for them. For example, you know, I have two children, and I'm an essential worker. And so, our organization was able to partner with some local community partners to provide childcare services for me to be able to come to work. And I think that's one of the things that is a beauty of, you know, partnerships and community interactions. For our patients, yes, we provided telehealth visits through video or through phone. However, now we're seeing that there are some populations that, as Rhonda mentioned, don't have, you know, the technical capabilities to be able to have these visits efficiently, timely. Sometimes we have a video visit, but I can't hear my patient. They can't hear me. So, again, that delays the care, creates frustration. And so, I think we're still trying to work through those, some of those kinks and, you know, asking for a lot of patients on our end, but we're also having patients for, for patients for our patients. But because we understand there are so many things not related to their physical health that is affecting their health. And so, you know, we're trying to be mindful of that. So, we, we have these geek squads within our organization that help to prepare the patients ahead of time to see if they're, if they have equipment that's compatible for our software for the telemedicine visits so that when they are scheduled, the visit goes a little bit smoother. So, but I think all in all, it's really about teamwork, understanding, you know, limitations, understanding, it's all a learning curve for all of us, but I think our organization's really done very, very well, and I commend our leadership team for doing that.
That is amazing. Thank you. You know, the, what you're talking about in terms of technology and doing all of your work, you know, through telehealth and telemedicine, it was really parallel to the conversation we had earlier about the barriers of technology with education in the last panel. So, really appreciate, you know, kind of putting those things together. Doctor, if I could keep you here for a second, I have a few questions for you specifically. Can you talk to us about what the best healthcare practices are that can be applied during this time during COVID?
Sure. Most definitely. I think these principles are basically public health and health promotion principles. We just happen to be applying it to COVID-19. But the main thing is staying informed, knowing where to get information that's accurate, that's timely, and being around a community of people who are somewhat, to some extent, being able to abide by the guidelines that are being set. One source, or a couple of sources that we're recommending is cdc.gov. I'm sure everyone's familiar with it. And they try to do their best to have information that is clear, concise, and easy to understand. Another source locally is austin texas.gov/COVID-19. So, that's so you can get information based on Austin itself. The second thing I'll recommend is nutrition, sleep, stress, hydration, mood management, health connections with other people who keep you healthy. I know people will say it, it's not necessarily a medicine and it's not a treatment, but these are things that prevent you from being vulnerable to any disease. It's just how do you maintain good health? And nutrition by far is the first thing, like what you eat, what you take into your body, how much water you drink. Those things allow you, but have a strong defense against anything that comes against it. Now, going to the actual virus itself, standard hygiene is still critical. Washing hands, disinfecting your homes, you know, not sharing too many personal things. I think those are very key. Wearing your mask. Everyone has different YouTube videos of how to make different types of masks within the clinical settings. You know, we are provided with N95 masks as needed, but covering and protecting yourself, and if you're sick, protecting yourself from others is still, still important regardless of what you see on the media of people who are not doing it. It really still is important. Social distancing. Now, that's been a hard one because within COVID, there are other activities, the protests and just other things that, that is creating a need to unite as a community, but we still have to try our best to not be too close in areas and settings that will put us at risk. So, social distancing is still key, six feet apart. And then monitoring symptoms to know when to seek care. I think for our population, it's really important to kind of keep track of how you're feeling. If anything is going in a different direction that you're either questioning, not necessarily that you know the answer, but you're questioning, I think it's still important to reach out to your healthcare provider and say, hey, should I be worried? Or is this normal? Or what are some things I need to keep in mind to be able to know when to go get care? But those things, I think, are important to just keep in mind as best practices.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next question is really about how the coronavirus has specifically impacted the African-American community.
So, I'm going to quote my CEO, Rhonda Monheck, on this. She said, "The truth about the pandemic is that everyone experiences the pandemic the same way they entered." I'll say that again. You experience the pandemic the same way you entered. So, if you enter into this crisis with a compromised state of health, you're going to experience adverse effects related to coronavirus. And that compromised state could be your age. It could be your socioeconomic status. It could be your type of employment. It could be your history of chronic disease. Whatever it is, it could be levels of discrimination that affect your stress level. Whatever it is, it is going to affect how you respond, how, even if you are infected, how you recover. Because again, it's like whatever your baseline status protects you or makes you vulnerable to the virus. And so, unfortunately, within our African-American community, you know, it's just underlying things that make us more susceptible to have higher rates of infection. The last CDC reports that looked at the virus rates based on race and ethnicity, saw that, you know, among certain populations, even younger generations of Black African-Americans had higher rates than white populations who are older. So, if you need to look at age, you know, some, for certain reasons, and I think we all know what those reasons are, you know, the African-American population is being hit hardest. And if you think about it, it's like, it's not the skin color, you know, if I may say that. It's not the skin color that's really putting us at risk. It's, you know, the social determinants of health that are associated, you know, with populations of color. And so, so that's really what we're seeing. And yeah. And I think we've also mentioned other things about racism, so overt covert forms of racism that affect access to healthcare. For those who reach the healthcare settings, their symptoms may be downplayed compared to others. If they're not able to advocate enough for themselves, again, you know, if it's dependent on a system to give them the face they need for their health, it's kind of hard to be able to overcome some of those things.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And this, this is really kind of a part two of that, of that question is why are African-Americans at a greater risk of death from coronavirus?
Yeah. So, specifically related to death, because even if you look at those who already have the virus, it's, it's more about you have symptoms. How do you know when to seek help? And from some of the anecdotal reports that we've heard, some would call their healthcare provider and they say, stay home, which is not necessarily against the guidelines, but it's stay home and then what? You know, so the important thing is staying home for this amount of time because if you're not well within this amount of time, then you need to seek further assistance. Okay? So, that's the question of whether they're getting that second part of the information. In addition to that, it could be a personal thing of underplaying their symptoms. I mean, you know, we work hard, we struggle, and sometimes we underestimate, you know, our status as ourself. So, it's hard to know. Again, I don't think any study has really looked at the specifics of it. These are just my speculations and some of the conversations we're having, so I don't want it to be quoted, but, but it's, yeah, it's like, to what extent are we, you know, just downplaying, you know, a simple cold? Oh, it's just a cold. But if a cold is transitioning to, oh, you're having shortness of breath, or it's transitioning to, it's taking you more effort to do the work that you usually do, you know, those are, there's a reason to seek help. So, now, when you do seek help, this is where we talk about, you know, whether, whether there is some discrimination occurring. There was a story about a young lady whose husband was having these symptoms, and he called 911. And 911 came to the house and said, okay, yeah, it could be, but stay home. And at first, she said, okay, the 911, you know, the emergency response people left. But she noticed that her husband was start, you know, continuing to be in distress. And if it wasn't for her ability to kind of challenge the system, you know, and say, no, no, I'm driving him to the hospital, you know, she had just only, you know, rested on the recommendations of the emergency medical system, he probably would have died. And so, it was a question of how many people are dying in their homes because, you know, they're just not being treated the same level of urgency as, as other populations. And again, it's speculation of what that is, but we understand that there is, there are health disparities related to that, whether we were being intervened timely, in a timely manner. And then when you get to the hospital, again, if you have any underlying conditions, if your body is coming into the hospital in a state that is already compromised, then you don't really have enough reserves to fight off or to be on a ventilator for a prolonged amount of time or to be able to get back your nutrition, you know, once you're off the ventilator, you know, just all those things. And not only that, then you're in the hospital, and then you're separated from your community. You know, you can't have visitors. You can't, you know, so all those things, you know, play a part where within the African-American community or, you know, some populations, like being close knit and tight, it's not just us, I think for any human, it's important to have connections. And so, when you don't have those connections, you don't have those supports, your body is just not as easily able to fight off any disease that it, that it has.
That's very good.
Yes. Thank you very much. Yes. So, I have some questions now for, for our other panelists, but before I go there, Regina has asked me to remind participants who are tuning in that we have two $25 drawings and to please send an email to gccma1975.org@gmail.com. So, okay. So, so questions are for Rhonda, Kelly, and Jenna from Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club in The Caring Place. So, Rhonda, if we could just start with you, can you share with us the programs and services that your organization provides, and how can families apply for these programs?
Before I begin, the doctor, all of the things that she was mentioning was very, very heavy stuff. So, I'm just taking a moment to breathe through that because this is like actually happening in our world. Okay. All right. So, there are many services and programs that the Salvation Army provides throughout Austin, which would be Travis and Williamson County. And we would not be the Salvation Army Williamson County without the Salvation Army in Austin. And so, some of the services and programs that we provide is Salvation Army has a nursing home ministry. In Williamson County, we have a music ministry. Also, we have a food pantry and, of course, our emergency financial assistance program. Excuse me. And we provide services to all of Williamson County, men, women, and children. And so, these are just the free programs that we provide. And I also want to mention our Red Kettle, which is, you probably see the bell ringers at Walmart and other places during the holidays, and also our Angel Tree Program. And so, that is some of the programs and services that the Salvation Army provides. And our mission is to prevent homelessness in Williamson County by helping families living in the first stages of financial crisis to help them move towards self-sufficiency.
Thank you, Rhonda. Kelly, can I, you answer the same question, please?
Sure. So, the club is open all day, 7:30 to 5:30 PM for kids aged six through 12 currently. As I mentioned before, we, we have room for 32 children. Those spots are full. We do have a waiting list, but we are actively communicating with the parents we have in place if they no longer need us or they only need us at certain times that they can share that spot with other kids or relinquish their spot if they can make other arrangements. We're, we're always doing our best to bring in the kids who need us most, which is our mission. We offer breakfast, lunch, and a late evening snack for those kids onsite. For kids that are off-site, we offer activity backpacks and virtual activities where they can interact with us and participate in projects, art projects. We're doing virtual tours. We're, we're planning lots of cool virtual things, not only for the kids who aren't able to be there, but for the kids who are. It's summertime, and normally, we take field trips every week, and we can't do any of that right now. But, but most importantly, what this is doing for those families that were able to get in is give them peace of mind about where their kids are for a summer. I mean, normally, even in a summer, we'll have 275 kids a day, and I will still have a long waiting list of people who are in need of our service. We are extremely affordable, and we pride ourselves in being available to the community. And so, it's a struggle right now to, to, to face the reality that we can't help as And so it's a struggle right now to 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 face the reality that we can't help as many people as we'd like to help. So we're really looking um this summer and beyond to expand what we do virtually and and be as of service as we can to everyone we possibly can.
Thank you, Kelly. Jenna?
The Caring provides for uh the Caring Place provides for basic human needs for um residents of Georgetown and northeastern Williamson County, and so that goes from essentially Andison Florence to the west all the way to Granger and Bartlett in the east. And so the programs that we are are providing right now include the food distribution, which is open to anyone who needs assistance with food. We don't turn away anyone for food. That happens Tuesday, Thursday and Friday from ten o'clock to noon. Um and the there are just a few basic questions that we ask, um including name, uh birthday, number of people in the family and zip code. Um and that's all the information we need in order to get food pantry food. Um we also provide fresh food for families, uh which happens on the first, third and fifth Monday of the month. And uh that is um open again to anybody. Uh anybody can come and that is uh the only information we need is the number of people in the family. We are also open for financial assistance, emergency financial assistance. That is uh Monday through Friday, we're open from nine to four for that. And uh primarily what people need to do for that is fill out an intake form that's available on our website, but also available um in paper at our um offices at two thousand one Railroad Avenue in Georgetown at our programs and services offices. So we have um several ways to apply for assistance, including email. Um you can actually come, we have a Dropbox, secure Dropbox at our facility at two thousand one Railroad Avenue, or you can fax information. And essentially, we need um your identification, your lease or utility, whatever you need assistance with, um and and proof of crisis. So um I would encourage people to call the Caring Place if they need help with financial assistance, and that number is five one two nine four three zero seven zero nine and leave a voicemail. That voicemail is checked three times a day and we will return your call usually that same day, but no later than uh forty eight hours from your call. So um uh please, I encourage you, if you need assistance, please, please call the Caring Place.
Thank you, Jenna. And could we just stay with you here? Um can you talk a little bit about how you make your services and resources visible to the community? How how do people find you?
Sure. Well, uh as we've already talked about, um people don't have access to uh to to some people don't have access to technology and and so we're we're finding disparity there. So the Caring Place tries to get out um information in a in a variety of ways. Um uh of course, you know, our website, social media, several social media platforms. Um we also do advertisements, we have a a e-newsletter. Um and then we're also putting out signs, you know, that say, you know, we're open for food right now, or we're, you know, open for services. We write press releases, uh we, you know, answer phone calls, we provide information to people when they call. Um we have Spanish speakers available to translate, um you know, both uh print materials and in person or on the phone. Um so we try um, you know, a variety of ways, uh any way we can. And if anybody has any suggestions, uh I I'm very open to it, so thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Kelly and Rhonda, same question uh to you about how how do people find your services?
When I think of the Salvation Army and the office that we work in, um originally, I was the only one that was doing social services at the time and and seeing clients. And thankfully, we have uh another individual working with us. And I imagine this to kind of be like, you know, accepting the five loads of bread and two fishes. And so, and now um we're having to accept a multitude of bread and fish and, you know, trying to figure out with with being such a small organization and being helpful and partnering with the Caring Place and Round Rock Area Serving Center, yes, we're mighty warriors, but trying to filter out, um although our doors are open, you know, how do we, you know, not get too many and still, you know, be sustainable and helping uh individuals, helping clients? And so I always, our hours are eight thirty to four thirty P M. And we think that the job has been done on its own to get our name out there, just by partnering with agencies. Um uh as Gina said, through websites and also through word of mouth. And so I don't, right now, we're not failing in awareness of the Salvation Army. Um and we just ask those to be thoughtful, um you know, when calling the Salvation Army. And um we work well a lot, we work well with our partners and and we're very happy to have them because it um it takes more than one organization to help out, I believe, thousands of individuals um inside of Williamson County. And um hopefully I answered that question that was a loaded question.
So for us, um most people interact with us on our website, that's actually how you register in in a in a normal environment. In this new normal, we're asking people to give us a phone call and stop by and fill out applications in person to get accepted to the waiting list. And um we communicate from there individually with families when we can take them in and and for what duration. It 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 can be difficult because you can't really enter our building. Um but we're happy to meet people at their cars and uh get them applications and receive that as well. Feel free to give us a call and we're happy to tell you all about what we offer and when we're able to offer it. And if anyone's interested in only our Zoom sessions, like if you're just interested in uh what we're doing virtually, we're happy to share that in information individually, but we sort of want to keep that, we don't want to put that on social media necessarily because we want to make sure that it's a safe environment for the kids. So we're sharing that with parents individually.
Susie, can I add something really quickly?
I just wanted to mention that our, for now anyway, and into July, we will be doing a contactless food pantry. So it is a drive-through, um we put the food right in right in the trunk and and it maintains social distancing. Same with financial assistance, um that is a contactless, um it is a phone call now and um receiving documents as opposed to coming in and seeing somebody and getting service. So again, we're trying to be as safe as as possible and still um accomplish our mission.
Great information, thank you. So kind of akin to this making resources available, GCCMA has asked, how can they help make your services more visible? And um and how can they raise awareness on the programs um that you provide? Um I'm sorry, um Rhonda, can we go to you?
I think that presently, um sometimes you have to realize when it's time to grow and move. Presently, if there are any individuals who are receiving unemployment, who's looking for employment, I think it would um be important for them to give give our officer a call, you know, to see if we are a best fit for each other, you know, to help us with the many individuals who are in need of help. So that's something that uh you could help to get out for us, just, you know, possible employment, you know. That's not something that I can say for sure, but I know that that's something that we're looking into that's very important, so we can continue to do the most good. So that's one of the things. And um and I I think that just to keep talking, all of the organizations here in Williamson County that help. And I guess last but not least, I, over the years, I've heard the word about duplicating services. Um I think that that dynamic and that narrative on uh duplicating services should be avoided at all times. Services have to be duplicated because if a family is in need of twelve hundred dollars and each agency is only able to produce four hundred dollars, then it sounds like you have to duplicate the service for the family. So I don't know where that came from, but that's important. So just to keep that in mind, that is another way um that you could, you know, promote um the services that we all provide to help out the community.
Thank you, Rhonda. That's such a great point, you know, that there's there's um, there's a a lot of folks with a lot of needs. And um this, we we're supplementing and coordinating, not necessarily duplicating, right? So, all right, Kelly, can you answer that question, please?
Sure. Um for us, um we we appreciate being a part of the conversation and we appreciate um the connections that we've been able to make with with other nonprofits. Many, many of uh the families that we serve throughout the year have have been referred to us by others. And uh we try to echo that as well, try to make sure that people in need of mental health get get uh in touch with you know, services that are affordable for them in the same ways that that we try to be. So we appreciate that dialogue and we we also appreciate the collaborations that we've been able to have. I think what what clubs um really strive for is being a conduit for as many services as families need in the ways that we're able to. We have a large facility and in in a normal scenario, we have a lot of families uh that interact with us on a daily basis, and they may not know about other services. So I think I think that for us, it um uh just like Sally Sharmi was saying, we don't have a problem people knowing who we are or where we are. Uh what we want to make sure is knowing what's available to them, uh not only through us, but but our partnerships. So we appreciate the dialogue and look forward to continuing to um to make that network bigger and and more well-defined.
Thank you, Kelly. Um Jenna?
I absolutely agree with everything Rhonda and Kelly said and and echo exactly what they said. Um but I would also uh say to the GCCMA that um, you know, I I would ask that question of you too. How can we partner with you better um to get out the word about what we're doing and how people can get help and if they want to give help? You know, how do they, how do they get engaged with us?
Thank you, Jenna. Uh Rhonda, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add for any of the listeners out there, um the organizations that we work with who are here today and those that you that you know about, when you call in, please understand that we are have a lot of individuals that are calling in, so we just ask that you continue to be patient with us as we help, you know, help families out, you know, one at a time. I just think that's important. And when you call in, although we know you have a crisis, you know, where you have rent due, utilities are due, it may take two, three, possibly even four weeks to assist you, and I promise you, we are doing the best that we can.
Thank you, Rhonda. Dr. F. Faribay, are you still with us?
Yes, yes, I am.
I was wondering if you also had some thoughts about um about how we can help raise awareness about Lone Star Services? And we also had um Dr. Ron Swain, who is who's um a a viewer of of this panel, um asking about how we can continue to educate African Americans about improving their health conditions. So I just wondered if you wouldn't mind doubling up on that information for us?
Sure, sure. Um well, at Lone Star, our website is lonestarcares.org.org. And when you go on there, you'll be able to find, you know, services. We um provide care to anyone regardless of insurance status um and uh demographics, anything. So we are federally qualified healthcare center. Um so that's something that if anyone's looking for care, um we're happy to provide that. Um I think another resource that's helpful in light of Juneteenth is Austin B P A, the Austin Black Physicians Association. Um I am on the board and I do community outreach for them, especially as it relates to um schools and uh young people. Um the mission of ABPA is to um decrease the health disparities um in African African American communities and to inspire the next generation of young people to consider careers in medicine, especially young people of color. So and on the ABPA website, you'll be able to find different providers um from different specialties, if you're looking for um anyone uh to provide some care for you. So pediatricians, internal medicines, OB Joins, all that. And then to answer the question, I think that's it. Oh, one more thing about Lone Star before I get to the to answer the question. Um Lone Star uh is uh also very, very interested in this conversation because even before the pandemic, we've always been um mindful that social determinants of health are very important to incorporate in our healthcare systems. Because we know that you being healthy, it's not only based on your biology. Um there's so many things around you that affect how healthy an individual can be. And so to answer um Mr. Romain's uh question about how can we educate the African American community more, um I think it's important to consider the education as one part of someone being healthy. One way, like I said, is to inform them, um helping them understand the importance of knowing their their own bodies and not being afraid to challenge the healthcare system whenever there's any contradiction to um, you know, how they feel. Um no one can tell you how you feel, no one can tell you, you know, um yeah, how to respond if you don't feel well. Like if you go to someone and they're telling you it's okay and you don't feel okay, find somebody else. So I think it's just that courage. I think our community is so used to being dependent on um the health, the health system, you know, just providing the information and providing medications, not everything is about a drug um or medicine. There's so many other ways to stay healthy, so that's one thing is, it's not just about the knowledge um or the ability to apply to knowledge. Um it's really also about us challenging the 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 healthcare system in general. Because where we live, learn, work and play affects our health. So that means challenging our government as well. Um it is a systemic approach is needed to ensure that communities are healthy, not just an individual. Um because uh access matters, you know, I may have the knowledge to know, oh, these are the symptoms and I need care. But if I can't get an appointment in a timely manner, that's going to affect my health. Or if I go to my appointment and I'm expressing myself and I feel like I'm not being listened to, that's going to affect my health. Um if I live in a neighborhood where I can't access healthy fruits and vegetables, my nutrition is going to be compromised. If I am working and, you know, I have children in the family and I need to provide for them, you know, and my work is not necessarily either um meeting the needs of my family, that's going to affect our health. If I don't have insurance, that's going to affect our health. And your employment, especially in this country, your employment dictates the type of insurance you have. And you can't get access to care if you don't have the right insurance. So there's so many things, I think, just and I hope I answered this question well, that yes, we need to educate. That's, everybody needs to be educated um on um health matters. But it's not just an individual matter. We all as a as a collective need to be able to think beyond that. And Lone Star is doing that too. At Taylor, there's a project called Project Head Waters, or Head Waters, I believe, I don't mess up, mess up the actual word.
You're right, Head Waters.
Head Waters, yeah, where um it's really trying to create an inter-agency uh program. Um having healthy uh head start and early head start there with a senior program that has a a farm uh attached to the plan and just have an opportunities to really provide holistic care in like a one-stop shop. I think that's where healthcare really needs to go, is where you come, yes, you can get this if you are sick. Our clinic shouldn't just be about sick care, it really should be about how can we promote health. Um I do that with my youth, like I'm starting a youth clinic as part of Lone Star, and I don't just see the uh the teens, I talk with them in a in a youth advisory council um mode where they share ideas, like, oh, well, I need volunteer services, you know. So I might, I might reach out to some of you guys to be able to connect my youth with opportunity-specific engagement, because that affects your health. Um so, yeah, we do things, career building, you know, career assessments, that can affect your health. Because if you don't do that early, you know, your 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 employment status can affect your health in the future. So I think healthcare really needs to move in a direction where we're thinking, you know, more comprehensive. We've you've said comprehensive in the past, but I think we really need to be more comprehensive and not depend on the medical experts that see our community partners as experts in their own right as well.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, doctor. Yes, and it's, I love that you're you're speaking to social determinants. All the things that uh you're advocating for are about keeping um our our community out of the doctor's office, you know. So we don't, we don't have to see you as much, right? You know, and uh, right? And that's, it's it's so so critical. Thank you for for speaking to these issues. Um I know we are, we probably need to to have ten more minutes. Okay, wonderful. I um I had a, Dr. Swain also asked a question about um a a resource list for social services. And I just wanted to provide feedback about that, you know, we really don't have a a a list, kind of a, like a, something that you could print out or or distribute on paper anymore. Um there are a couple of of resources primarily housed on um our county health department's website. It's called HealthyWilliamsonCounty.org. And um the the health district has done a great job in trying to keep all the resources um up to date in that space. And uh you can find it in a link called Aunt Bertha. And you can also find it through a And you can also find it through a vehicle through United Way, which is called 211. Unfortunately, these are resources that are online, so if you don't have internet access, it's much harder to find these resources, but this is where the work comes up to date. So in terms of intersecting with the information, if you need it, all of the people who are panelists today and their organizations can help you identify some of those things too if you need help. So is that fair?
Yeah, definitely.
All right, okay. So we just have a few more minutes and could each of our panelists kind of give a closing statement, just your final thoughts before we wrap it up here? Rhonda, do you mind if I start with you?
Not at all. Man, the doctor, she's amazing. She is very amazing. She's speaking to my heart and she's speaking to my mind and she's speaking to my soul. I would like for us all to remember that although we work in these agencies, we have to take care of our minds, our bodies, and our souls. And so I want to give a shout out to the Samaritan Center because I got an email that they were doing free counseling for individuals on the front line. And so although we're not seeing individuals in our office, we're still seeing individuals, like I said, about tripled that we were seeing before. And so for full transparency, I decided, you know what, I'm going to take advantage of that opportunity to get free counseling. And the reason why I'm being transparent is because hopefully there's someone who is listening and who's hearing and understand that sometimes, rather than talking to your husband, cousin, aunt, friend, uncle, sometimes we need to talk to someone outside of our fold. And so I feel blessed to have the opportunity to speak to someone about the obstacles and challenges that I face because I don't want to shut down and I don't want to shut my mouth because I've been given a gift. And so I just, for whoever is listening, I am sure that if it's for you, that you understand what I'm saying, so therapy, 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 counseling, you know, if you like talking to strangers, which I know that might sound odd, but when you go to the grocery store, when you see people in the grocery store speak, hey, you know, how are you doing? How's your day? Those things take you a long way. This is hard work that we're doing, call after call after call, person with crisis after crisis. It's a lot. And so I just want to remind anyone with listening ear of my voice to remember that. And what the doctor was saying, we can't be afraid to speak up. Again, for full transparency, I went to the doctor and yes, they wanted to tell me what they can do and what they, but I had a thousand questions and I decided I'm not going to be afraid to ask. I'm not going to be afraid to ask for the thing that really no one asked for because I wanted to advocate for myself. Because I advocated for myself, oh my goodness, I got the best care from the doctors and I had respect for myself and respect for the doctors listening to me. So I get to tell the doctors about me. They don't get to tell me about me because they don't know me, they haven't spent time with me. So please keep that in mind when you, like the doctor was saying, when you're not feeling well, I need to quicken this up, please speak up for yourself. Do not let anyone shut you down because it could cause you your life, it could cause you your state of mind, anything, so just keep that in mind. And I am, you know, so happy to be working for the Salvation Army, partnering with the Carrying Place, partnering with Round Rock Area Serving Center, Operation Liberty Hill, Hill Country Ministries, and even the Boys and Girls Club. And I just really thank y'all for the opportunity for me being here today.
Rhonda, thank you so much. Kelly?
I appreciate what both of you are saying, particularly about mind, body, and soul. That is kind of my mantra for when I'm creating programming for our kids. You know, during what we're going through now, these kids are feeling every bit of it, every bit that the parents are feeling, every bit that we as a community are feeling. They just have less tools to express it and they don't have context that we have. They don't have the ability to look long-term and think about what happens after. For them, this is their reality now and they don't necessarily understand it. So I think it's important to remember, like, the perspective I have is definitely through their eyes. I'm with these kids every day. A lot of these kids are new kids for us because they're coming from families that don't normally utilize our service, but definitely needed us in the months of March and April. And so it's not kids I know intimately, the way I have kids that are with me all year round, but in their eyes and in their actions and in their moods, we can see how this affects them. And it's a compounding effect. They absorb everything, all of our anxieties, all of our fears, all of our worries, they just don't have a way to release it. So my job is to make sure that they have a safe, consistent place to be and appropriate ways to express themselves. And as much as I can, we, you know, our program is trying to deal right now with mindfulness and giving these kids moments to breathe. That's actually what we call in the club, take a moment to breathe and then let's consider how you're feeling right now. We're going to rate that on a scale. And that's a way that they can share without having to provide details. I feel sad, I feel angry. You know, they're learning what the word anxious means and what that is as opposed to other emotions. So we're trying to help them define how they feel and come to terms with it and have a reality where they're sharing that with others and see that others have those feelings too. Building a community in those, through those emotions and through the experience that they're sharing, that they don't realize they're sharing. So I'm really happy to hear the dialogue we've heard today about tackling this holistically and making sure we're looking out for everyone's needs holistically because that is where better health is created. That is how we change it. So for our little tiny part, that is what we're trying to do for our kids in our club and remotely.
Thank you, Kelly. Jenna?
Oh, there's just already been so much wisdom in the room and on this panel. I don't think I have much to add other than to say, it's really, I myself have felt isolated in this environment and it's so great to be with you today and to share these experiences and what we're trying to do. And so I really appreciate that and appreciate y'all and your partnership and all the incredible resources that we have in this community. I know everybody is working very hard to accomplish their mission, you know, as are we. And again, I wanted to pick up on something that Rhonda said and that is, these are, this hard right now to provide services and we are all trying to provide them in the safest way so that we, again, can continue to accomplish our mission. And so that takes understanding and patience and, you know, doing things differently, you know, shorter hours. We are all trying, I think, to navigate this in a very responsible, respectful way. And again, patience and understanding and a sense of humor and flexibility, I think right now go a long way. So, thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you, thank you, Jenna. Dr. Afaribe, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. I do, I concur on so many levels what you all have already said. The only thing I can add is, the situation reminds me of that book, Who Moved My Cheese? We really are all trying to adapt the best way we know possible to all the many, many changes that are occurring. And so I love Rhonda's view of really self-awareness and just knowing, okay, this is what I need to be able to kind of keep things going and there's no shame in it and that's awesome. And I empower more people to have that mindset too. My thing from the healthcare perspective is that we need to provide services that reflect the needs of our communities. On the flip side, communities need platforms and spaces to be able to express those needs. You know, how can we know what our communities need if we don't offer opportunities for them to let us know? There's power in numbers. We see that things move when there is a collective behind it and communities need to challenge the healthcare systems to provide holistic care. I mean, that's just what it is. We just have to be able to provide it. And it's not enough because I think what we've kind of relied on in the past was saying that, well, we make referrals, you know? I, you know, suggest to my patients to go to the Boys and Girls Club or to find the Carrying Place or, you know, to, but again, it's how can we provide some of that and connect with those organizations so that the patient doesn't have to do so much extra work just to stay healthy? You know, how can we be able to, you know, have that information or have the services even in more centralized environments? So all I'm saying is, there's power in numbers, power to the people.
Doctor, thank you so much. And it's so true and it makes me think, you know, that something like this is so powerful because we are coming together and having these collective discussions and just more of this, you know, is so meaningful, you know? Maybe we can do that more at GCCMA. Thank you for having the wisdom and the organization to think, to prioritize this at this time. I think, I just wanted to, we did have one more question from an attendee about how elderly folks are being supported who don't have families, who can help them during the crisis. And I did want to mention that there, and I'm happy to connect and help with resources partnering with GCCMA, but there are a couple of organizations in Georgetown that are providing resources and services in connection. One of them is Faith in Action Georgetown. Typically, they do transportation, but just like these other organizations, they've had to make some changes around what they do and are really trying to assess needs of seniors who need them and respond to those needs. The other is Opportunities for Williamson and Burnet Counties and they also, they provide Meals on Wheels programs and a range of wraparound services that will help. And that alongside the Carrying Place and the Salvation Army, you know, also serve seniors. And so if there's a way that we can be more intentional about providing specific information, I hope that's the person who asked that question, you know, maybe we'll follow up and we can provide, you know, those details. So thank you all again very much. I'm going to ask, invite Ms. Alma Johnson to provide some closing remarks from GCCMA.
Great, thank you. Thank everyone for tuning in today. On behalf of GCCMA and our president, Ms. Paulette Taylor, and all the officers and members that make up this great organization, we hope that the virtual town hall, embracing change, the new norm, has been most helpful to you. Now, what do we do? We've had this great conversation today. It's time to take action. And we invite you to take this information that has been shared this afternoon and take it forward in our community because it all starts at home, right? And once we decide to share information as we have today, it makes a difference. So on behalf of the organization, we appreciate your attention this afternoon and I have a few more things to share with you. First of all, today's broadcast on YouTube will be available in the near future, so you'll be able to refer to it and look at it again in its entirety. Also, GCCMA is working on a website, so it's coming soon and we hope it will be a source of information. We want to be a catalyst to invite people to share information in this community so that we can grow in this new norm for a positive outcome. And lastly, to all of our GCCMA members that are on, are viewing virtually with us, be it YouTube, be it Zoom, what have you, please remain on the call through its entirety because we want to take a group photo today, virtual photo of all of us together. All right? So hang in there, stay with us until the very end. And on behalf, again, of this organization and as the Juneteenth chair, I am honored to be a part of such a great organization. And we're always inviting new folks to come join us and make this just a great community. Thank you again.
Thank you, Alma. And I want to thank our panelists again, our viewers. Thank you, GCCMA, for hosting this event. You've made me so proud today to be a member of this community. It is just an honor to work with all of you and to be part of this year's Juneteenth celebration. And with that, I think we'll close, wishing everyone a wonderful weekend and thank you.